Yeah, I'm gonna record also.
This?
Yeah.
Alright, um, it's September 24th. This is a workshop on the Bureau of Ordinance.
I'm Jim Williams.
Terry Mitchell.
We have Max with us, Max.
From Midcoast Council of Ordinance.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Um, and we're doing a workshop on the Shoreland Zone. So, you wanna kick this off?
Yeah, so as part of the land use ordinance overhaul, um, the Shoreland Zone Ogley District was something that I kinda had already done in a different community. This is following state language and I included something in here regarding commercially functionally, commercial function water dependent uses to align with what Pittsburgh and Harpsville has. And I really just wanna go over, I know it's 21 pages, I don't expect us to go through everything tonight, but I'm hoping we can go through any things that jumped out at people. Not really typos or spelling or anything like that, that's something that can be addressed at the end, but this is more just, do we have to have this language, can we sign this here? Things like that. And if you're, the highlighted items are areas that I would wanna address. Make sure that it is something that is corrected for what the town wants. But you also get to see right now what the rest of the plan would kinda look like. So the Shoreland Zone or Ogley District, whatever they're called, it's its own article. I say section here, but it's gonna be, it's Article X. And everything else would be a different article. And it follows the number point system, so 1.1 is purpose, 1.2 is the applicability, 1.2, 1.1 is examples and so on. For the Shoreland Zone, the main item that I'm doing is rather than having six or seven different districts that the state would usually have, we're just saying that there's a 250-foot Shoreland Zone, that's just throughout the whole town. With two separate cases, there's the stream detection, which is a 75-foot buffer that goes along some streams that feed into very sensitive wetland areas. And then there's the resource protection, which is a 250-foot buffer that goes around environment and sensitive habitats. And other items that are identified through park and inland issues, wildlife, or natural area program, or any other sensitive areas that the county board might point out. The difference is that the stream protection and resource protection will be, will still allow uses, but if people can find a way to build outside those, that's where frictions should be made. Whereas everything else in the Shoreland Zone, it's just, it's 250 feet, it's Shoreland Zone, no curators. And on page two of this plan, I have 1.5, 1.2, 1.3, noting that commercially functional water dependent uses shall have no minimum setback if it is not located in the Resource Protection, Stream Protection Subdistrict, which is what I'd make you ask for at the last meeting.
Yep.
One question asked, how, how is the Shoreland Zone defined as far as, like this, like the Shoreland Zone technically right now runs all the way up to Foster's Point Road.
Yep.
And then across by the store.
Yep.
Up through there, it just seems...
Shoreland Zone is typically, and I think that's also defined here, yes, the applicability, all lands which...
Question.
Uh, all land within 250 feet horizontal distance up the normal high water line of any great pond or river, uh, as well as 250 feet of the upper ledge of coastal wetlands, including all areas affected by tidal action and up on edge of freshwater lands. So, it's very similar to what you have right now already, actually. It's just 250 feet from the edge of the water. Normal, normal high water.
But like, so if you look at that map right now, um, certain, certain places show up that just don't really seem like Shoreland Zone, you know? Like, you said Foster's, like crossing the store, it's Shoreland Zone, that just seems...
When you say the store...
Yeah.
New Matters Market.
Which one are you talking about?
Oh.
Cause this is Route, uh, that's Route 1, this is the state road.
Yeah, so like we're here, right?
Roughly, yeah.
Uh, is that right?
Yeah.
So it just seems strange that something like this shows up.
So that's an, yeah, that's an inland wetland that would probably be confined through the...
It's by a vertical edge, comes down in there.
No, um, like right by the store, uh...
Oh.
Like we're, we're here, right? So like it goes all the way up, it just seems strange, like there's bigger other wetlands that are bigger and they don't show up.
We're talking about...
Okay. I'm curious.
Well, and part of what I'm gonna be doing in addition to these ordinance updates will be map directions. So, one of my coworkers, she just did the Shoreland Zone map for Bath. She'll be doing the same thing with you guys, where she's looking at the data that she has from the habitat, maybe DEP, uh, fish and wildlife, natural area, uh, what was that one I said? Natural areas program, flood hazards, she's looking at all those maps, saying, you do that.
So when you say it's 250 feet from normal high water?
Yes.
Um, that's referring to freshwater, I presume? And then there's, you know, then it's 250 feet from areas affected by tidal action. So we had this, these, these storms that was 14.6 feet. Is that now where that, our tide line, is that from where we're measuring the 250 feet?
No, we're, we're measuring from, uh, I always like to say when it's low tide, you see that watermark where it goes dark and then it's sunny, that's sort of, that's the 250-foot starting point.
Well, if the, if you got a vertical ledge, it doesn't really make much difference, but in some areas, it's very sloping. And so, a normal high tide in this area is 9.0 and a normal low tide is 0. And some low tides go minus 1.8 and some low tides go plus 1.5 or whatever. And now, a normal high tide is a 9.0 according to NOAA and all of the, you know, United States Coastal Geographic Survey has done. So what, I guess that's what my question is, is in the ordinance, we wanna be careful to define just what we're measuring from, because it could make quite a lot of difference. If it's an area that's affected by tidal action, I'm not even sure what that means.
So this is one of the wetlands flooding? Cause that, I'm seeing...
Affected by tidal action, does that mean we have this highest tide? Is that, is that an area that's affected by tidal action?
No, but it's when the, it's when the wetlands flood. That's what we're talking about.
The problem comes in where we're measuring from. Like all these setbacks, 75 feet, you know? Where do we start measuring from? Is it where the 9.0 line is? Or is it where the 14.6 line is? Where do we measure from? And I think we just need to define in here where we're measuring from.
Right.
That's all.
And again, what, with the maps, and I said this at the last meeting, you're gonna see the maps, and if they are maps that you would like to have corrected to address any of these two terms, we can have that done. And I don't...
I guess my, my concern is to give people in the code enforcement officer and us guidance as to just where we're measuring from.
Right.
Is it the 9.0 line? I always thought it was. We measured to where the normal high tide is. And part of this does say normal high water. But that's, I think, referring to ponds and...
Great ponds and...
And so forth. But on the tidal, affected by tidal action, it's like, wow, what if there's a surge and what, you know? It's like, it's kinda all over the place. We need to, we need to draw a line in the sand.
Right. And it's trying to...
You know?
Cause it's trying to account for the flooding that is happening, so that...
So if we say it's, if it's 75 feet from normal high tide, then we know it's from wherever the 9.0 is, and we can measure that. Then we know.
Makes sense.
But it's like, otherwise, it's all over the place. So we use the point, we use the highest annual tide, which is 1.6. And we use the, the highest tide we've ever had, which was 14.5 or 6 or whatever, you know? And so on and so on. I mean, it's not, really measuring from.
Yeah, I think what we gotta go by is what, um, Kevin, was it Kevin Clark that was here last week? Last time they were here?
Oh, my word.
That table. I think that's...
No.
Well, I think that's what DEP's going by, so I think we probably should do the same, don't you?
I think we just, we need to define what we're measuring from, to give guidance to the code enforcement and to us. And, you know, where we're measuring from. I'm not sure even now what he's going from. You know, where, you know, what our latest applicant was measuring from. I'm not even, I'm not sure.
Huh.
He was using, so a database from, you know, I'm not sure, Lightyear or, yeah, I'm not sure what he was...
I copied that table, I, you know, I copied that table, kept it, just this. I'm assuming he knew what he was doing, but maybe not.
Right, so anyway, but we just, we need to define it.
I think what we should do is define it, however DEP knows, right? And I believe that would be the debris line of an average tide.
Which would be 9, a 9.0 tide. Cause you can look at the table and you can say, okay, now Tuesday, October, whenever, at 7, we're gonna have a 9.0 tide. So if you're on the shore, you can say, okay, there's a one. This is a 9.0 tide, there's no storm surge, there's no, you know, wind or, this is 9.0. Then you can measure from that, and it's very easy. And I mean, that's what I'd like to think our objective is, is to make it easy. And some of this is not easy. I mean, there's a lot of, like trimming the trees and so forth, I mean, it's...
So it would be good to get John's, um, and I think we just need to figure out exactly, make sure Kevin was right, I think, right? Does that make sense? And like, and have...
We just need to define...
Yeah.
What it's gonna be in our, if it's gonna be normal high tide, which would be in this area, 9.0, which is what it's gonna be. And I think, I think John now is measuring from the highest annual tide, but I'm not sure. But it could be interpreted as, you know, the highest tide ever, which is around the 14.6, which is, um, you know, it's gonna become more common, I suppose, but what do we use?
Yeah.
What do we measure from?
Yeah.
The DEP wants, they, they license differing things above the highest annual tide, which is, you know, in the tide calendar, you know, it'll say, I think it's 11.5 or 11.6. He was using 11.7 last, you know, last meeting. So, we just need to decide if it's gonna be the highest annual tide, or if it's a normal high tide. Because they do use that term, normal high water line of a great pond or river. They don't say, you know, the highest it's ever been in a storm or, or flood. You know, you know? Says a normal high water line, so, okay.
That's 250 feet, 400, line, we're talking about. And then there's the stream protection, which as I said, won't show a 250 buffer around streams going into these big wetlands, instead it'll just be 75 feet. And that, it'll be the same as someone wanting to build a Shoreland Zone. Once you get close, 75 feet or closer, that's where you have to pass that, unless there's a special exemption you get.
Is that possible?
Yeah, um, under the permit by rule, you can get down 35 feet to a stream.
Okay, how would this work?
No, there's nothing in our ordinance, there's nothing in our ordinance that'll allow that. That's what, that's what I ran up against with the bait shed. So there's nothing in the ordinance that'll allow me to get within closer to 75.
Shouldn't it be?
Yeah, and that's what Max...
And that's why I've already added it.
If it's water dependent, as far as commercially functional, you know what I mean?
Well, why would it be commercial?
Because then you're gonna open it up to someone wanting to build a McMansion right on the water and then they're gonna wonder why the town allowed them, allowed the next buyer to buy a home that's about to fall there.
Yeah, but, I mean, the needs of an individual homeowner, I mean, that can be very similar to, you know, a groom or a clan day or...
Yeah, it's like a bait shed versus a boat shed, where you have life preservers or kayaks or something, right? Like that's not commercially, um, uh, it doesn't fall under the commercial use, but it's definitely used for water.
But my question is, how many, I mean, this is a question for John, how many people have come to the town office saying they wanna build a home right up on the water?
Well, there certainly have to be some safeguards there. It wouldn't be, uh, you know, it'd be dependent on, uh, you know, if it was possible easily to put a house at 75 feet, then that's where it should go. But if, uh, well, I know of one parcel of land, it's not, you know, it's over off the number, a waste of money. And they can't build anything on it, because it's all within 75 feet of the water. Now, to me, that's a taking. I mean, she can't, she can't do, she can't go to any building on it. Maybe they, no, she can't even build a 80-foot shed, because that has to be a residential use. You know, there has to be a, an association with an existing grandfather use. So here she's got a piece of land, because she, everything's within 75 feet or 35 feet of the center of the road, whatever the setback is off the road. Even though it could be 100 feet wide, she can't do anything on that property.
She can't get a variance from, for the road setback?
Not that I'm aware of. And I think that's what we should have in our ordinance.
I think if you go through the, if you go through the hardship variances, um, it specifically says not for setbacks. You can't give them for setbacks.
But I guess my thought would be to build a problem, I think. Build it into the ordinance some way to allow some flexibility for those people. And there aren't that many parcels, but there are some parcels that can't be used because of these setbacks, and it just doesn't seem right.
Okay, and I think that problem with the setbacks is more associated with the dimensional ones, and I kinda pointed this out last time as well, how maybe that needs to be what's looked at and changed.
What do you mean, dimensional?
Cause last time, we were talking about people who wanted to build closer to the neighbor's line, some people want, you're talking about someone who could've built closer to the road, but you have an ordinance that says you can't do a road setback or undue hardship, is that what I...
I think that's a state, that's actually state language, um, in the variance pro, in the...
But you can always create a variance, a dimensional standard variance if you wanted to. That's an option.
I know.
So, that I think is the problem. I'm gonna be very honest, I'm not comfortable giving exemptions for Shoreland Zone variances for someone who just, for someone building a home. Cause I know you're coming from first place with good intentions. I'm coming from a place where I know someone is going to abuse it to build a McMansion on, on the water, especially when water front property is in high land. A commercial dependent one, I understand, because that's for commercial use, that is for someone trying to make a living, I'm not getting comfortable with that one.
And we can, we can lose sight too, that like, if you're within 75 feet of the water, you'd have to go to DEP also, so it's not like, not like just if they could come here, they'd have to go through the whole NRPA permit.
Well, I think, I think that's our challenge, uh, is to, uh, is to, is to craft something to allow some flexibility and, you know, in these parcels that are, it's unusual, you know? That the setbacks create an unus, unbillable law, essentially. And that's our challenge, is to come up with some methodology to, um, to allow that if certain conditions are met and so forth.
And I'm fine talking about that when I'm doing the non-conforming use section, when we're talking about setbacks, lot sizes, anything like that, I'm fine having that conversation. Shoreland zoning, I would like to stick with what the state has. That, that's just, and not give too many exemptions unless others in the area have it. Like this one, the commercial exemption, I'm fine with that, because Pittsburgh and Harpsville have this language. I'm, I'm perfectly fine including that, and I understand it since commercially water dependent areas are, I mean, shorts of law.
Well, I'm hoping that we can do something for these parcels that are, that have become unbillable due to the setbacks in the 75 feet and the, you know, the road setbacks. You know, I mean, that's, I know it's a challenge, but...
And also, is there a way that it could be not just commercially functional? Like it could be a private water use reason? Like if someone has a piece of land that's on the water?
Well, what is it, what is, what's the use?
Like a boathouse, like a storage, like whatever you're doing down by the water?
Like a water dependent use, which you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like not...
Like a floating runway, it's a water dependent use?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean docks are, are the use.
What?
A dock, something like that, what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking of more like, like if you had a, a place to put your, you know, kayaks, life preservers, the things that go with it, that you cannot let it up and back all the time.
Something like a shed set, I think is also an exemption, but I, and I can get that, I wish. That's another option while the state does have. But that's more of a shed, holdings and storage items. Even that, I don't know if it goes all the way to water, if you have to get these 25 feet away. But I can find that language.
And I'm curious, how would it work if, if someone has like a piece of land that has, you have access to it to get within the 70-foot? Like, could you put a trailer or a movable, um, living space? Like, 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 let's say like you went, it's within the Shoreland Zone, but you could have a place where you park an RV? Like it's not dumping anything or doing anything?
Right.
Or if it was like a, um, you know, like a camper or...
So like a power ordinance reads now, no? Like if you read our ordinance to the setbacks?
Right.
I mean, like it says we're gonna go boats, you're not supposed to store a boat?
A boat.
A container? And it has to be the road setbacks and the water setbacks, if you read that in our ordinance? So, like you, like you, and like, I think we should...
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and we should get rid of it, because it's too hard to enforce, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And that's probably not in here, Max, right? Like, so, but if, but we have to address it when we do our setbacks.
Well, it depends, I mean, you're saying RV, I assume we're talking like a campground and individual private campsite at this point? And that is, and those are in here. Uh, page 14 is where we talk about campgrounds, individual private campsites.
Okay, so that would be...
But that is also a 75-foot. For, uh, camp, campsite placement on any lawn, including the area intended for recreation vehicles, shall be setback limited to a distance, 75 feet from edge of the stream, 75 feet from up on edge of coastal or freshwater land.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying if it's not, if it's something that could be moved out of there and it's not necessarily affecting, cause the whole point of it is to protect that 70 feet
Yep.
Within the zone, right?
Yep.
But why can't we use that? If, like you own the land, why can't you use that? And as long as you're not harming that 70 feet? Do you know what I mean?
75 feet?
75.
What do you, what do you mean harming that?
Like you're not, you're not building something there, you're not doing anything to the land itself, but you're providing a...
Environmentally, you're unaffected.
Right, you're not dumping anything or, or building anything or taking anything down.
I mean, the 7, this 75-foot clear, this 75-foot buffer, anything, this is, I'm, this is all state language. I don't know what else you want me to say.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if that's something that we could speak to.
Well, I mean, the setbacks were all because of the purpose of the Shoreland Zone is to create that protection. I know what you're saying right now, well, they just move it in, they're gonna be 70 feet away, what harm is there gonna be? But the 75 feet, I think, was just determined as trying to minimize the development, minimize anything happening in the area, cause it's going right to the water.
Right. But if it's not developing? Like it's still per, like permeable ground, the trees and everything, the vegetation, it would be fine, but...
But you're, you're saying that if the person just moves in, nothing happened, okay? Well, what about the neighbor next door who removes a couple of trees? Oh, well, how would my thing be different? The guy next door, he's...
Well, there's a separate part of your ordinance that talks about it.
I know, but I'm saying the slippery slope.
Like right now in our ordinance, it says setbacks applying to, and it says cars, trucks, RVs, trailers and boats, containers and dumpsters. So like this, like right now, it's pretty restrictive, for sure.
The problem is these grandfather lots. If somebody has a 3A by law, then no problem. But it's these grandfather lots that are, and this is, this says 30,000 square feet of water. It doesn't say anything about lots that are existing prior to the ordinance. You know, where, they wouldn't have to make setbacks into, but right now, it says you can have 30,000 square foot lot.
It says one campsite per lot existing on the effective date of this ordinance or 30,000 square feet of lot within the subdistrict. So if you have someone...
The campsite itself one has to be existing, not necessarily the lot itself.
Right.
So that lot which is...
Per lot, no, per lot existing on the...
The lot, the land, when I say lot, I mean the, the showfront lot, not the campsite lot.
If the lot was created before the ordinance was done?
It's not what it says. One campsite lot existing on the effective date of this ordinance. One campsite per lot. So they're talking about a campsite that was existing, not the lot.
The lot existing on the effective date. I will confirm, I will confirm the language of DEP, but...
It's not clear though, I mean, to me, it doesn't allow, they say you've got 29,000 square foot lot, you can't put a campsite on it, as it stands right now, the way I agree.
I will confirm that with DEP.
And, and we also don't define what campsite is. I mean, does that mean I can, you know, I've got a pup tent, I can't pitch the pup tent down on my, on my land if it's not 10,000 square feet?
Because I don't just shown you one article, we haven't gotten the definitions yet. The definitions are gonna include all this.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
There is something in our ordinance about lot, lot of records, a lot of record.
Yeah, but it's not in here, I don't...
Right, what the...
Record of a campground, a campsite. And those are the kind of, those are the kinds of things we wanna avoid. We don't wanna have to, we want it really clear that it's allowed or it's all of that. So...
Yeah, so on, on page nine of our existing ordinance, it talks about non-conforming lots.
Yes, yeah.
It's definitely...
So if you have a, I, you know, so if you have a lot that's one third of an acre, which would be like 15,000, 15,000 square feet? You know, I mean, you can't put a campsite, you can't pitch a tent on it, right?
Cause if you're creating a new one, a new lot.
You cannot pitch it, I mean, you can't. Unless the tent has been, uh, I mean, a lot has been there for, let's say, 30 years or 50 years, but you can't put a tent on it, right?
Okay, so we're, we're already being over a tent, which I...
We're arguing about use of property along the shore. And I think it's important that people be able to use it if they don't damage things environmentally. And this is very restrictive, and it, the way I'm looking at it is that, um, I mean, you couldn't have a campsite on this 20,000 square foot lot. And that makes no sense at all to me. You can't pitch a tent on a 20,000 square foot lot.
It's Shoreland Zone?
Yeah. It doesn't, I, I don't think it's right. I think people should be able to do that, but it's just me.
I think so too, so we, we can change that, right?
I will ask the DEP, but when I come back and say...
This is only, only for grandfather lots?
And I will watch what the language is.
Prior to the ordinance.
Yes, and I, that's what I'm saying, that's what my intuition is. I will confirm that with the DEP, that if the lot was created before, whenever the, the original ordinance, then fine, you can create that campsite, and I will confirm that it's not that the person had to have had the campsite itself, but just a lot.
But, uh, so we just, you know, we have to use language, so we're just really clear on that on these pre-existing lots. And there's many of them in town, uh, these pre-existing lots, you know, Rockhaven, I mean... You know, Rockhaven, I mean, first time, you know, lots and lots down there, then on the neighborhood. I think there's one in the zoning down here, you know?
There's a bunch of them, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of lots, on three acres, a one acre, a quarter, a quarter. Yep, okay. So. What's next? Where do we put in the thing about the eighty square foot shed? There would then go.
That's something I would have to include, I don't believe it was initially included in here. Um, because I wasn't told that it's something included last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything for shed. But I can put something in the next time. Yeah, the only thing I have in here is the exemption for, uh, stairways that would be accessible to water.
What page is that on?
That's page two.
Page two?
Yeah. That's one point five point one point three. Right underneath the high level diagram.
Okay.
So that's not on stairwell, I probably include the shed exemption underneath that.
See, they said no high water line of water line. They said that version. No high water line. Okay, no, I think that's good, that's, it's good to have those things in. That would be adequate for people. So. There's also something in our ordinance about a stewardship. It's on page forty-one. Now, that's under, yeah, page forty-one, paragraph eleven. Low level and code steward units, so you need to put it no higher than three feet, no greater in volume than seventy-five feet. So we definitely wanna be sure that was included.
Page forty-one, you said?
Of the existing ordinance.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm looking at it.
Now, there's, I think I have related to it, but this is under.
H, yeah.
Peter's docks and laws, and it's number eleven. And these people on the shore, they pay some pretty good money, uh, to purchase the property and then, you know, every year, they pay a big tax on the property, I think they deserve to be able to use it to. The full six ten provided a dozen quickies, environmental.
Accessory structures, low level, both storage and, and equipment. So yeah, that I'd not include. And I'll just make sure it's the state language.
So where does this state language come from, and who developed that? Is that part of the statute?
Fire, it's the statute, yeah, the twenty fifteen rules named under Department of Environmental Protection, who make the updates quite frequently. Well, not.
This is a rulemaking?
Yeah.
So how would you define a commercially functionally water dependent use? What would that be?
A commercially use that depends on the water.
Would that be a clam ligger?
Clam ligger who needs it for.
Could be, I'm sorry, clam license, you know, worm, worm results, have a cover?
Yeah, if they're using it for a commercial use.
And how about, uh, the lock string certainly?
If it's being used for that commercial use.
A commercial license, yes.
Yeah.
And, I don't see the cap. Um, I suppose, uh, commercial fishing?
It's a commercial use, yeah.
How about main guy?
Being a commercial use that depends on the water.
So. So when we get to the definitions, I think it's very helpful, have all the sentences written out, so it's clear. If you have, you know, if you have a clam's license, that's commercial use, if you have a lots license, commercial lots license, that's a commercial use. A recreational license, the lock string probably wouldn't count because that's not, that's just a recreational license, that's up to five tracks. Do you have yours?
I have yours.
Don't you ever say, "had it is." But I mean, I think it's, I think it's very helpful, because people are gonna challenge this. People, and the more, the more specific we can be, the better.
Yeah.
You know, we spell it right out in the definitions. You know, where the timeline is where measuring from. You know, take all, just sort of help us out.
So right, so right now, like for a dock or anything, there's no setback for a dock, right?
In your current ordinance or?
No, in this ordinance.
Uh, in this ordinance, the docks and piers are in here. I have to find. That would be page eleven. No more than one pier dock, or for some structure extending over, like the, 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 the water line, so you can fill if you want, but no, no, on water line. Again, going over what's already, or a state item. Not affiliated with any commercially harvest areas that harbor master. That respects on fisheries as determined by, I have the harbor master in here, and I have that highlighted, because I know, I think you kicked it to the region, so I don't really want the harbor master.
Yeah, I'd also remove it, you know, but.
Well, who would be?
I think the codes officer.
Code officer would determine that.
Yes, I agree.
Or their designated. So yeah, you can build a dock or more, no setback issue.
So what does it mean when it says at least, in ten point one, it says at least twice the minimum shore frontage specified on the table? So that's.
Yeah, the table is still gonna have to be created, I didn't know if everyone wanted a shoreline zone table that would be separate from the rest of the land use table, or if you want it all, and then reuse it once.
Oh, I see.
And based on the district, and at least twice the shore frontage is specified on the table. I mean, it would be like, if you look at your dimensional requirements, now I don't know what you have for a shore frontage anymore.
So there'd be no requirement for side setback? Or?
Not there was a, a state item that's just not in here, but. Well, it also has to get U S Army Corps of Engineers, so, for not being out of the waters. I don't think there's anything on setbacks, not that I would put one in here.
So I think, you know, just having one, I mean, if you need two hundred feet for, I suppose it was, again, I suppose if it's a grandfather lot, then you might, you know, it might be fifty feet wide, or it might be twenty feet wide.
Or, or maybe none, right? Like for, for a grandfather law of record, like I think it should be none, you know?
Yeah.
Like whatever they got.
They would be a setback, I guess, for.
Yeah.
At least in our ordinance. Now, the Army Corps of D P might have something.
Yeah, the Army Corps does have one, it's twen, I think it's twenty-five feet.
Well, let, let that control, they're not dealing in our office.
What's the concern about the grandfather lot for a dock or a pier?
Well, like if somebody's got a grandfather lot, like a lot of record, and like, just because they don't have two hundred feet, or a hundred feet of frontage, or whatever, like shouldn't limit them from having a dock.
It says here they can have a dock, the only ones who can do, the only reason you need twice the minimum shore frontage, if you're doing more than one. Uh, is that it says here, no more than one pier dock for some structures extending. Except on single lots, having a lot of at least twice the required lot width, and based on the district, and at least twice the shore frontage. A second structure may be permitted and may remain as long as the lot is operated and operated.
So when you're talking about single lots, that's any lot that's existing? That's not, uh, that doesn't have to be middle of frontage, or anything like that on the lot?
If you're, yes.
I mean, if you're creating a new lot, you have to go by the ordinance, whether it's an existing lot?
Yes.
It's whatever it is.
Right.
Okay.
And, uh, just out of curiosity, am I creating a shoreline zone specific table and dimensional item, or am I trying to merge into your land use inland one?
I think it'd be easier just to keep it separate, too.
I was just gonna say, keep it together.
Keep it all together, whatever's, I don't, I don't have.
I can, I think when I'm putting together the land use chart, I'll put together two, showing what the one would be if it's merged, showing the one what would happen if it's.
I think whichever one would be easier to understand, right?
See, right now we have this, you know, this is the one table.
Right.
And lists all of the, uh, lists all of the districts.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I, you know, I was expecting the same.
Yeah, and I think we're all, still all used to that page, so I think we're, you know, right.
Right, and if I'm doing that, uh, the only difference would be pretty much three separate, maybe three, maybe one all, which is just shoreline zone, where all this stuff happens, and then resource protection and street protection, where it's gonna be a lot more large. Except for your few exceptions.
So I think we didn't have it all together, but.
I'll, I'll put together two tables, you guys can make a decision.
Well, that's more work for you.
Whatever, I don't, I don't have a preference, like I know, like I've got so used to this one, I could, you know, whatever's easy for the most.
It's nice to be able to go to one location and all setbacks.
Okay, I'll, I mean.
I'm fine with that too, you know, that way people just don't look at the wrong one, right? Like if they look at one table, right, then they look at, they can't look at the wrong table, right?
The problem comes in when you've got all of these little notes and caveats and stuff, I mean, you've got all these little, you know, notes and, you know, trachycrates. We need to try and simplify, and I know those things have been added, you know, for, because of things, individual cases that have happened.
Yeah.
And to try and, you know, alleviate issues for, for people. Okay?
So, I just wanna try and go through some of the highlights, because for almost an hour into the meeting, I wanna just at least go through my highlights, I need to make sure you guys don't have any changes on these things. So, first, um, the commercially functionally water dependent uses, all that. I will make sure there's a defined definition, but that language is what you were seeking, you were looking for, that's from Harpsburg, Pittsburgh. The only change I'm just making is the bit of language on subdistricts and all that stuff, but that's. Any questions or comments on that before I move on?
Could you, um, stat, could you stat a list of, um, definitions that are going to come into play?
Yeah.
For example, like we just talked about commercially functionally water dependent uses?
Yep.
And so, and then the definitions, and stat, you know, lists, and then we can, and then we can.
Yeah, I'm keeping track of the notes, so the things that I need to check with the D P, the definitions I need to be sure I include.
Great.
So, okay, there's nothing else on that. Next is on page three, there's two smaller items, and these are regarding agricultural uses in the shoreline zone. One is that if someone's, if there's agricultural activity involving tillage, a soil rated in forty thousand square feet, a surface area within the shoreline zone, and courts filed a conservation plan, planning board, do you guys actually want the conservation plan, or should I just say, file it with the town office?
What, what page are you on now?
This is page three.
Seventeen fourteen, one seven one four.
One seven one four, yep.
One seven one four, agriculture?
Yeah. But these are just specific requirements for someone wanting to do agriculture in shoreline zone.
Well, it just says they need, they just, I gotta file it, right?
Right.
The planning board doesn't need to take any action.
That's why I say, does the planning board want to see it beforehand, or do you just want it, you want it to send something to the town office? Like, do you want, do you expect, if someone's coming to you and saying, "I wanna do this massive farm on the water", are you expecting them to have a conservation plan that night at the planning board meeting, or later on after you've given it?
Well, we don't, we don't have to take any action. I mean, I don't know why we, why they wanna file it with us, they wanna just file it with the code, the code enforcement office, the office. He's the one that is doing the enforcement, so, you know, he's the one that needs to be informed, you know, if there's issues and stuff like that.
And that's fine, I just need to make sure I put that down, so that it's clear from the start, so. Code enforcement officer is fine?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep, okay. And then the next is one point seven point one point six, it's just two down. Just knowing the operations in existence on May sixteenth.
Before that date?
I just said, I, I'd have to see why D P picked that date, but that's just air. So, I didn't know if you guys wanted to pump it to a different date or not, or if that whole item should just be removed. Or if you wanna move it to like eighty-seven, when shoreline zone is first being anything.
So.
But I can just ask the significance of that date first.
Well, um, I guess, I mean, how does that work? I mean, here, I mean, the D P and the G S O prolongate these rules. And in the town, I'd have to adopt them?
No, if you don't wanna adopt twenty-fifth, I mean, this isn't even a twenty fifteen change, this was something, I think twenty fifteen changes are all similar, just related.
I mean, but, again, how does that work? Do we have to have that in our ordinance?
You don't have to, but.
I mean, what if we don't?
Same thing when I was here for L D two thousand and three, if someone wants to challenge what you have versus what the state has, then it's up to you, what you wanna do after that. And I'll just see what May sixteen two thousand and one's relevant, maybe it was just.
Do we have something in our ordinance now, or, uh, agriculture?
Uh, I don't, uh, I can just see why May sixteen is relevant. I'll just see what that is, maybe they say it's just there, you can remove it. That might be one of the options.
I know that there's been a lot of issues surrounding use of menorah, field, storage of menorah. About, I've had, had these areas that were, you can contain the menorah.
Right.
From the storage of, you know, noras, menorah. I know there's been an issue, especially, you know, around somebody's likes, kind of like others. I mean, it's been very contentious, Tom, you've probably, you're probably.
And like, it's easy to say we don't have any farms in West Bath, but remember that guy that came to the planning board and wanted to bring a million or two million pounds of manure to the, remember that guy?
Yeah. He used, uh, making a composting station or something.
Yeah, so it's, that wasn't.
So, I mean, I think it's good to have some protections there.
Yep.
I, I only asked the question next because, uh.
You're wondering where the number.
I mean, it's, I mean, there's all of these rules in here, and it's, especially with the cutting, I mean, it, uh, it was very restricted.
Agriculture in the shoreline zone, looks like page forty-five.
Okay.
Um, I'm not seeing anything now about May two thousand and one, I do see November two thousand and one. And that's just saying, all spreading of disposal of manure shall be accomplished in accordance with the newer utilization guidelines.
So are you reading?
Do you have any timber harvesting there?
Um, I'm just looking at, uh, this is D, M D. Agriculture in the shoreline zone is.
I don't have a D.
I don't know a D either. Under J, under timber harvesting?
No, this is its own second section, agriculture in the shoreline.
Oh, wait, I should page you again, he said, one?
I'm looking at it on forty-five. Uh, I don't know, it's D, it's probably way back. I just probably have the. I think I got what I could find on there. There it is.
Three D. Three D.
Three D. No, I don't see anything here about two thousand and one or pre-existing items, so I'll just check with the state.
Oh, I see something about, uh.
Let's see, let me use that day again, or it's November two thousand and one.
Yeah, but that's talking about spreading manure in conformance with some plans for two thousand and one. I'm not seeing anything about a restriction, so I'll check with that.
The date itself isn't really, I mean, never happened to me, but it's, I do think it's good, it's something, it's a day that, you know, it is, you know, it is a lot of the continuum. Uh, if it's not creating issues, but it is creating issues because we wanna be able to, uh, make some changes. We don't get code off, we gotta do that enforcement, but, you know, there's no active files right now.
And that's why.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, this, there are some places that they do, uh, cut hay, but they're not tilling soil.
Yeah, so, this two thousand and one is probably just a, want to start it? If you guys don't think it's necessary, I think just do it, then, and I can double check that with D E P.
No, I think it's good to have one, same, no question.
Uh, in that case, you can also amend the date, doesn't have, probably doesn't have to be two thousand and one, you could probably change it to sometime more recent, like two thousand and fifteen, you can change it to sometime earlier. Again, I will confirm with D E P.
Thank you. Okay, page three. Eighteen, where are you at?
Don't, don't worry, I'm only going through the highlighted sections unless someone found some big red flag they wanna talk about, so. Cause the only, cause on page four next thing is just saying, conservation plan will be filed at the town of West Bath, and that's no problem. But unless you were about to. The next item is on page four, one point seven point two, agriculture. This is an optional item, uh, agriculture land use activities extending over or below the normal line, water line, or within the wetland located, uh, within the stream protection or, and within, within the wetland located in the stream protection or shoreline zone. Shall require a planning approval in accordance with the permit standards. So this is if, like, the, like a sand farm that was up in Belfast, if that's in the shoreline zone, if they say, oh, I don't see it anywhere here, we wanna do a, we want to just put it in town, just has to come to the planning board and go through approval process. Which.
Where's section point one point eight?
One, one point seven point two is what I'm looking at.
Where is, it says the premise sections and standards in section one point eight?
Uh.
Where is that located?
One point eight is way down there.
Oh, this is in, this, in this?
Yep, it's still in this one, it's page eighteen, shoreline zone administration, uh, which just goes over.
Oh, okay.
The permanent items, the group's criteria, all that.
Ah, okay.
So if someone, so if someone's standing with him, one point eight, permit required, okay. Okay, yeah. So what you find, that just means that if someone's trying to do an agriculture use, that's a land-based one, what we're hearing about nowadays, they follow this criteria. They can't just went to the regular language where it's, say, oh, I don't see any requirements from you there, so I'm just gonna follow the shoreline zone items. But again, that's an optional one, that's just more if you wanna have something in there. It's been a hotly contested thing, but that's been in Belfast, Sears Port, you know, areas that have a lot of stuff going on there.
I'd be interested to know Jonathan thinks about that.
How's John?
I'd like to have his input.
Yeah.
For the whole board, um, I mean, really, say whether or not we include that or not. I mean, on the surface, I think, I, I think it does make it clear as to what the process is, which is helpful, I think it makes it clear, it's helpful, certainly. I mean, it's pretty broad, it says all development or other land use activity within the shoreline zone all the way. Other land use activity, that's very broad, other land use activity. I mean, that's walking, picnicking, swimming, I mean, is that?
I mean, that's gonna be with the table, that's gonna be.
Other land use activity. Shall require a shoreline zone permit. Wow, that's very inclusive.
Where does that mean?
That's on page eighteen, under eighteen point one, permit required, one, one eight one. One point eight point one, permit required. I can see that neighbors disagreeing about things, if that would be something they could throw at each other, and I guess I'd like to define what that is, that other land use activity.
You're sitting, this is one point eight point one, yeah.
One point eight point one, on page eighteen. So we just need to define what that is, other land use activity. Not that that means building a building or.
Yeah.
Well.
I think if you go, if you read, like, you probably trigger right down below, right, and it kinda talks about when it's not required. Talks about culverts.
Yeah.
Archaeological digs.
Yeah.
So it sounds like pretty much everything, huh?
Yeah.
I just think we need to, you know, I think the intent, like, other land use activities, whether it's, uh, you know, this construction of a dock or a Peter, you know, something substantial logist, you know, other land use activity, I can just see neighbors, um, arguing about that, what that means. So we need to be specific. So, we were on page four, and moving up on that, stone damaged trees, dead tree removal?
Um, yes, first, we're the timber harvesting, one point seven point three. That's just noting that that's gonna be a state responsibility. And John doesn't have to deal with timber harvesting in the, the shoreline zone, we like that. Everyone's different asset, unless you have a dedicated arborist in West Bath, there's no reason we wanna take this on as your own responsibility.
So you can get rid of the points, how does that work then?
One point, uh, timber harvesting?
Yeah.
So someone wants to do some timber harvesting in the shoreline zone, they'd be referred to the main bureau of forestry.
Okay.
And then, how do trees, store damaged trees and dead tree removal? This is, this is the big, this and any other tree, like, things of big change for twenty fifteen, this is all the new stuff, pretty much. This is how I find what to do when there's hazard, damaged, dead trees. And then there's.
So if a tree blows over, you've gotta replant, is that what I'm reading?
Which one are you reading now?
Seventeen four one, one seven four one. The removal of a hazard tree results in a clear opening in the tree canopy, greater than, that's about two hundred fifty square feet, which is about fifteen feet squared. Replacement with native tree species is required, be at least two inches diameter.
No, so I think, I think, uh, so like if a tree blows over, Jim, that would be covered under one point seven point four, point six. Storm damaged trees may be removed without a permit.
If the following requirements are met.
Right.
When the removal of stone damaged tree results in a cleared opening in the tree canopy greater than two hundred fifty square feet.
So the reason they have.
The area is not required, but the area should be required to naturally revegetate.
So the reason they have all this is because, who's to say that that tree that fell in the shoreline zone that happens to give you a nice view was torn down from a storm? Or if you just did it one day and it cleared it before you told the co-enforcement officer?
So a stump's been out there, moved, it may be ground down.
Is being replanted, then you could remove the stump.
What's that?
If it's gonna be replanted, this is talking about what it would take to remove a hazardous tree without an permit. So if you're gonna leave a stump, I mean, you don't need a permit, if you're going to remove the stump and do the vegetation, or you do the permit.
That seems very restricted to me. What we have already in our, seems very restricted to me. This is, this is, this is going beyond what we have, isn't that correct?
Yeah, this is, what even twenty fifteen rules that they have, at least what I thought they were. If there, this is why I say, is there something that sticks out as a red flag, 'cause I can then go back and check with D E P about what changes can make. So, are you saying the whole section, or are you, is there some specific sentence?
I guess I'm gonna have to look at it in more detail. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty, I mean, two hundred fifty square feet is about fifteen to sixteen feet squared, I mean, that's almost, any, I mean, any tree is that size.
Well, this one, right?
I mean, it's.
But the removal of standing, oh, this is just a dead tree.
But if trees blow over, I mean, I don't think people should have to go to the plant. Or if they're cutting, you know, a tree that's blown over, removing a tree because it's hung out in the trees or it's.
Right.
And, and because, a lot of places along the coast, when the, these spruce trees blow over, they'll, they'll pull out roots, you know, ten feet in diameter. And, uh, I suppose you can leave those, you know, but, a lot of times if you cut them off, my experience has been, if you cut them off right away, within a few days or weeks, that stump will go back, you know, and you can preserve all the earth and everything around the, the roots. But if you don't cut that tree, you know, that's already blown down, you're just cutting it at the stump, then it will stay, you know, it won't go back, you know, if you don't cut that off. And we have a lot of shit, 'cause along the shore, we have a lot of shallow rooted trees, and, uh, there's not much topsoil on them, a lot of ledge, and, uh, exposed to the wind and so forth. I mean, I just don't wanna set up something so people have to go plant trees.
Right, if you don't want, have, yeah, after they've removed. And the only, the only way we'd have to do that is if D E P has that and there's two thousand and fifteen ordinance acts.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing it is, though, this is all based on that.
Yep, and I'll go through it, see if any of this was an optional language.
And then, and so we'd be in violation probably with our current code then, if we don't have that.
So, the way D E P, the D E P originally gave towns deadlines to do these, they did do it with two thousand and fifteen, but, again, it goes back to, if you have someone who wants to do, well, you were talking about neighbors spending money, so, if someone just did a hazard tree following, whatever rule, let's say you don't have the hazard tree rules, and so a neighbor just did it, and then the other neighbor said, well, that doesn't follow what the state says, then, the neighbor can say, well, you know, this town's not following the state rule, we can consider.
The way I wish now, as I understand it, is if there's a tree that's, could fall on a house or something like that, Jonathan goes and looks at it.
Yep.
And he says, yes, I know, you can take it or not, you know? And, uh, these sections here, and I think that's good, that's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, because if you have, if you have an area, you know, you've got a whole bunch of trees, and then you have two or three big ones that blow down, then it all kind of opens it up, there's more that's gonna come down, I mean, you know there are, it's just a matter of time, because it's, the wind now can get in and knock them down. So, you know, Jonathan, I know Jonathan's been consulting in, uh, in those individual, individual cases, and, you know, he said, yes, you can, no, you can't. But this is talking about stone damaged trees, not trees that could be a hazardous. I mean, this, this section, like, here, deals with stone damaged trees. And in my way of thinking, if a tree blows down, it should be able to remove it.
Yep.
Whether, if it's, if it's blown over or.
Right.
Or if it's dead.
Right.
You should be able to take it, or it's obviously dying, you should be able to take it now.
Yep. All right, so you checked out Max then, and see if that is required.
I will see what language I can change.
But, I mean, looking through this, I mean, very detailed, I, I just can't imagine.
I mean, like you were trying to, like, someone just taking something down, could be said. Could we say like with evidence that it was a storm damaged tree?
That's why it says hazard trees in the shoreline protection or whatever you quote, whatever the law is. May be removed, hazard trees may be removed, may not be removed. Or I'm going to double check my language, this doesn't sound too right.
Where are you reading?
Yeah, yeah.
Where are you reading?
I'm reading the, you know, one point seven point four. Yeah, that's why I'm saying at the very beginning, you need to consult with the co enforcement officer to make sure the other requirements are.
Okay.
That, that's kind of a whole.
Yeah.
And that's why even one of the items that we kind of missed a bit earlier, but it's there is. Someone's doing something in the shoreline zone. Picture needs to be done before and after the project has happened, so that the co enforcement officer has that record. Same thing with the trees, the storm damaged trees, picture of the damaged trees. Where we have to. So I'll see what language can be amended, softened. Exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, one point seven point five. That's the next item from chapter one thousand one. So the exemptions from clearing and vegetation removal. Vegetation requirements clearing other than timber harvesting. One point seven point four to. Seven point seven, that's all pretty much the chapter one thousand language, all on vegetation and timber harvesting. Again, for the sake of time, since it's almost, I mean, very, we don't have, you don't have to read everything tonight.
Yeah.
I'll make some changes so I can talk about shorelines on the next meeting and by, between now and then, if you find anything else, just let me know through an email. And then I can send it out on D E P.
Okay, so the next highlighted is one seventy six?
This is an optional.
Okay.
Um, so this is just talking about erosion and sedimentation control in the shoreline zone. Just saying that an excavation contractor will perform activities required and results in more than, when they're doing more than one key soil disturbance. The person responsible for management of erosion sedimentation control practices must be certified by the D E P. And that person must be present at the site every day where moving activity occurs. Again, this is a little optional. This is just saying that earth moving activity is happening in the shoreline zone. Whoever is that certified individual needs to be at that site every day. There is earth moving.
So this, I mean, anybody that's building a house in the shoreline area, they would come under this, right?
If they're getting an excavation contractor who's doing more than key to key soil disturbance.
Which is going to be. Right, you know, it's any house that's being built that's within two hundred fifty feet of the water. This is kind of, you know, what we were talking about before in this subdivision. That there's going to be this large area that's going to be disturbed, you know, and they're going to do protections so that there isn't silt and so forth. You know, we were talking about that, you know, that subdivision that was being proposed.
So like right now, so like, uh, right now, the person just has to be certified, sign, sign off on the permit.
Yep.
Um, but does not have to be there. Like this is saying they have to be there every day.
There, that there's going to be earth moving activity.
Yeah.
To make sure that the erosion sedimentation control practices that they've talked about will actually be done.
Yeah. So like, I don't think the city of Bath requires that, do they? Or did you copy this from the city of Bath?
I've been working on their shorelines at the same time. This is an optional item, I guarantee them as well.
Gotcha.
Their people are residents out there, including people have to vote on it later. But that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
This is an optional item. I don't know if they're going to pass up there. All right, that's why I'm just saying to you, this is an optional.
Right. So I think like most, most air companies like won't say any names, but they got one person that's certified. So like, they're probably not going to be there every day, you know?
Yeah, that may be a little.
Not sure.
That seems a little long.
A bit, yeah. But, uh. But at least then on the other hand, we could have something in there that would say they would have to use best practices, et cetera, or something. That would, so that wouldn't be.
Yeah. Or we can just say that the person has to visit the job once a week, right? You can say that that certified person has to be there at least once a week.
I think that's good.
You know?
Yeah.
Something like that, maybe not as, you know, not every single day, but at least decide, you know, some type of thing every week.
It just provides some protection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So pretty much keep that paragraph as is, but just say this person must be present at the site each week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or inspect the site or something.
Must inspect the site each week or if moving activity occurs.
And then I think if you look at a lot of the stuff, um, like D E P does, like after a heavy rain event, like they'll have to go out. After like one inch of rain, they have to go out and inspect. You know, if there's a big storm.
You know, I almost think that there's some requirements now. I mean, I think the code officer can, you know, say, you know, we don't have, you know, silt fence and so forth. You need to have a heat and air.
Right, yeah.
You know, I think now, I think there's something in place that they have to, they have the law behind them to require. You know, to do these protections.
So just change it to this person must inspect the site each week or moving activity occurs for a duration that's sufficient to ensure that proper erosion sedimentation control practices are followed.
Correct.
Looks good.
Do you want me to include anything on that rainfall language?
Touchy guys, I don't want to make it too complicated, but I think that's the D E P's language like that, I don't want, we need that to be.
I can, maybe just leave me that for inspection.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mineral exploration, extraction, I think it's a nice one.
Yes, I just look together with this. Does West Pat want to remind me more than this?
I don't believe it, yes.
Is there anything that.
I mean, I do have one.
I don't, I think we do, we have something.
Do we?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, that is, that probably just the.
We have mineral exploration and extraction on forty.
So I can just reference, can I ask you?
No, you can of course.
Mineral exploration and extraction or extraction shall be prohibited in the shoreline zone. So I can just keep that language then if you want, where I just remove all of one point seven point nine and shall say it's prohibited.
I have no problem with it just as it is.
When you say just as is, do you mean as the current West Bath requirement is?
Yes, yes. Uh, that, I mean, we're only talking within two hundred fifty feet of the water.
Right.
So. I, I can't remember having any, any interaction with, with anybody about mineral extraction in the town of West Pat, can you? Ah, you're kidding?
Again.
Okay.
In the shoreline zone too.
Oh, was this recent?
Four years ago.
Was it before?
Where?
Well, maybe, maybe he shouldn't say it while we're reading our court.
Okay, all right, who and then?
All right.
Was it a problem?
No.
The review authority?
Uh, there, I have that. Oh yeah, so all one point seven point nine would be removed and we're going to replace it with this item. So just one point seven point nine, you might as well strike that whole thing.
Great.
And I'll put it in a, in a letter. Maybe I love when you can just rid a whole section. Um, then we get into the structures or other, and other activity extending over water bodies. This is the piers, docks, so we didn't have, we talked about four. We addressed that item, that the co enforcement officer has to determine that there's an intertapped in fisheries or that there hasn't been. Yeah, and then we get down to one point seven point ten point ten, this is on page twelve. So this is a potential impact to the piers and docks, vegetation may need to be moved in excess of the standards from four point seven point seven, which we talked about earlier. Um, provide that a permit is obtained from the, and I highlighted the planning board in this. Construction equipment must access the shoreline by bar and feasible as determined by the planning board. Actually putting in a planning board, do you want to be responsible for that or do you want the co enforcement officer to deal with that?
I think, I think the code officer, I think, because that would be like a site visit type thing.
Pretty much. But I'm just checking, what, how fine would you say?
C E O is good.
Okay.
Man, I guess, I just want to think about that a little bit, um, I'll talk about that a little bit. The reason to have the construction equipment access from the water is because you disturb the soil or, I mean, why, why is it important that they must access the shoreline by bars and feasible?
Um.
My, I don't think it's just the steward of things in the water to have them access from the land.
Yeah, that, that's just to cover if, maybe this is a long private road that could be floods every now and then, and it's, maybe there's a weight limit. Maybe the roads are posted, but the person wants to just build, start building. I believe the bar jam is actually an optional one, and I can double check that if you want to remove it.
I don't think it's a problem, do you?
Well, I mean, you, you like to be able to let people have the flexibility to access it because it's a lot more expensive to come into the hatch.
Right.
Than, you know, to bring something in from the land.
Oh, must access, I thought you were saying optional.
I can, I can just put in many, access the shoreline.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was saying, it seems fine to me.
Okay, is that fine?
Right, is that what you're getting at Jim, that it doesn't need to be one or the other, it's whatever they want to do?
Yeah, I mean, why don't I just remove that whole sentence? It's, that's the construction, construction equipment access to shoreline by bar and so forth, that remove the whole sentence, I mean, would.
Yeah.
And I can be removed, so I'll look forward to what you do.
And then, and then there's no, I mean, it's just, uh, it's up to, you know, whoever the, they have to be permitted anyway from the D E P. You know, and the D E P is going to have to approve it, so, on their permit, so.
We're striking the last sentence of one point seven point ten point ten. Then the next change is still page twelve, one point seven point eleven point one. Uh, I put down review authority, that's always just a broad, I'm like, I'm suggesting in case maybe roads ever change with co enforcement officer doesn't deal with something, with something anymore, and you want the planning board to do it. It's, I guess it's more of just an idea. You would like to have some type of catch base in so that if you say unless the co enforcement officer determines that no reasonable alternative exists, roads are driveways, shall we just step down? Man, if for some reason the planning board now wants to be the one to determine that, it's just a review authority.
So does this mean roads have to be relocated that are there today? Or is this only applied on new roads?
It's up to the construction of roads and driveways and various systems.
So this should be the, the new roads then?
Yeah, cycle for.
So if you could add that, new road, new in front of roads.
Yeah, newly constructed.
Right, right, sir?
Yeah. I'll put that in the open paragraph. So I also sometimes put the review authority whenever, kind of like planning board is a placeholder. Do you guys want to be the ones to determine when no reasonable alternative exists for putting in roads and driveways or would you have the co enforcement officer?
That seems like a code enforcement officer. I don't.
I'm thinking of a subdivision situation. I mean, do we want to have some input into that? Or let's think about the code officer.
Well, they're no control of the subdivision, right?
Right, but we have to have something in the office that will allow us to, to, uh. But if it's just an individual house, then I say the C E O, but if it's a subdivision, you know, maybe the planning board would want to have some input.
I think that's reasonable.
So I'll try and amend the language. To reflect that co enforcement officers would handle, I guess, private roads and driveways, whereas planning boards do subdivisions or just subdivisions, bigger projects, what, what are we looking at for what co enforcement deals with, what, planning would deal with?
I think we'd want to preserve, you know, the kind of, you know, we're working on a subdivision program that we'd want to be able to have.
Are anything larger than a single residence driveway?
Maybe it should be, well, maybe what I can do is have the language amended that says it would be the reviewing authority, uh, based on the associated use. So if someone wants to do the single family home, that's something the co enforcement officer is going to deal with in the shoreline zone. It's the co enforcement officer who uses that driveway because it's associated with it.
Right.
If the acting's doing a subdivision, it's going to go with a planning board and the roads are going to be associated with the planning board. So that it'll go with the planning board, does that sound?
That sounds good.
Sure. This would only apply to new roads and driveways anyway, correct?
Correct. And I need to go, include that newly constructed. Um, and the review authority will skip all those because that's all going to be the same note pretty much. Um, the next one's page fourteen, one point seven point twelve, this is campgrounds. So this is commercial camp, campground, this is someone's private use. Uh, I just have here all campgrounds associated to site's plan review approval by the county department of health and human services. I think I had site plan review because I don't know if that's what we'll call it, site plan reviews or planning board approvals? Or what the town would call these, use approvals for the site plans?
Yeah, I think, or just planning board approval, would that be easier to say?
I can also just say municipal review, so that if, if maybe the co enforcement officer deals with the campgrounds. It's something that the co enforcement officer handles. I also just say site plan review because that's kind of a general term other towns will use so that it's something.
I kind of like that.
So we do have, we do have a campground in the shoreline zone, overlay a whole section.
Okay.
What was, could you do that?
Fifty two.
Uh, so this would be the last item probably. All campgrounds are subject to whatever review and approval by the county department of health and human services, that item.
Um, state likely will be, under state licensing procedures and the following, so it says the campground should contain a minimum of five thousand square feet of land.
Yep, for each campsite, we got that.
And that areas intended, intended for placement records, we need to ship them or should be a hundred feet back.
A hundred feet back?
Yeah.
Okay, well, my half of this is seven to five feet. You got to be a hundred feet away.
I think so, we find this better.
Okay.
And the only thing I can say about like a lot of the stuff in here, like Jay Pears, who's on the planning board, you met Jay, I think? And the only thing I can say about like a lot of the stuff in here, like Jay Harris was on the planning board, you met Jay, I think?
Probably briefly.
He was on the planning board for like forty years, he wrote a lot of this stuff, and some of it was hard to, he was really su, he's super smart, it was hard to understand, but he had a reason for a lot of this stuff.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like I'm really changing anything, other than the setback for tents, shelters, and recreational vehicles for commercial campground use.
And he's got it, and they've got it down, uh, seventy-five feet from the normal high water line of other water bodies, tributary streams, and toward the upland edge of a wetland, so seventy-five feet from a wetland.
Yeah, that's what I have.
You got that too, okay.
So what was the hundred foot then?
The hundred foot is to, um, so a recreational vehicle, tent or shelter, um, one hundred feet from the normal high water line of a great pond.
Oh, that's why I don't have that, because I don't think you really have, I don't think it was one that was actually determined, because, maybe, but I'll check that.
Am I sure old, old pond is a great pond?
Yeah, probably, yeah, probably did, even though it's maybe, it's something to be, I think.
Um, so we're on, I'm gonna double check that.
It's all valid, all right, so I'm gonna go through.
Yeah, but I'll go through that, um, okay.
So, right now, we have some language that, on this page, that could do what it says, and provides a campground subdivision for pre-existing lots. One campsite, you know, with thirty thousand square feet, or per lot, which is smaller than thirty thousand square feet, and existing as of June fifth nineteen ninety-nine.
So I can include that in the motion.
So, if you read that existing, campsite placement on a lot, uh, should be set back one hundred feet from the normal high water line of great pond, and seventy-five feet from the null high water line of other water bodies. So that means that if you're on the salt water, you've gotta be back seventy-five feet.
Yep.
Even on the grand father lot.
Yep, if, if you do a new one, yep.
But this is for a campground?
No, this is for individual private campsite. And I think the campsite should be allowed on any pre-existing, you know, any lot that was existing as of June fifth nineteen ninety-nine, I think this should be campsite allowed, even if they can't meet the setback.
I agree with that.
I'll find with that. What, what, um, is it in this one, Max's sheet?
Um, no.
Oh, it's not in here?
The, the, the exemption I have.
You know, I would just be honest, goes on to talk about clearing of a thousand square feet and, um, one recreational vehicle, and sewage disposal plan, which, you know, all these areas have, they're self-contained anyway.
I don't know if this language in the D E P thing though, that would be allowed by the D E P, right?
Oh, which one are we talking about?
Putting a camper closer than seventy-five feet to the water.
Yeah, I think we should be able, if it's a.
But I don't know if.
If they can't meet the setback, yeah, I think they should be allowed.
But I don't know if the D E P will allow, that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying whether we allow it or not, but I don't know if the D E P allows it.
I think our own should allow it.
And that's why I have noted here saying, I would go, I'll go to the D E P and ask. And I'll run the hypothetical, if someone who's a lone builder within seventy-five feet of the water, uh, there's an option to still allow the private campsite.
Would the campsite be like, you know, used just like during the summer months, or would it be year round?
Well, we're limited to a hundred and twenty days.
So you still wouldn't, yeah.
But I, and I don't think that's long enough. I think it should be a hundred and eighty days. At least, you know, the summer months.
Right, I think that's fine.
So the hundred and twenty should be changed to a hundred and eighty. But the D E P won't like that either.
What would the setbacks be, would there be?